Okay, welcome to the Salina study session. We're going to talk about chickens in Salina. And I'll turn it over to city staff and get started here.
Yeah, I'll start with a quick introduction and a quick handoff, but the topic of chickens was brought to you recently, concerns about from neighbors in terms of our chicken codes and a very site-specific circumstance. Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager, has done quite a bit of research on our codes, as well as other communities in a comparison, prepared to a PowerPoint presentation that will walk you through. We have identified some decision points that you might want to talk about. The other thing that I would tell you is, we do have an Animal Control Advisory Board that serves in advisory capacity as relates to animal-related codes. We're starting with you in response to the feedback that you received and your request for kind of an overview, but if we move forward in terms of any additional consideration, we would certainly want to provide a similar presentation to the Animal Control Advisory Board, and then we could also provide to them any suggestions or requests that you might have about things to consider. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sean. He's done quite a bit of research on this.
Hello, Commissioners. Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager. Go ahead to the next one. Today, I just want to give you a brief overview, kind of what our code currently has in relationship to chickens, as well as an overview of 21 other cities, in terms of what their requirements are for the keeping of chickens. It is interesting, I'll just tell you at the beginning, of all the 21 cities that I looked at, every single one of them allows chickens. There wasn't a single city that I found in them that prohibited the keeping of chickens. So this has obviously changed over time. I remember when I was younger, it was rare that you were allowed to keep chickens officially within many cities. So here's a brief overview of the agenda. I just want to go over some of the areas of the code. I want to really talk about that, get some input on some areas of policy guidance in terms of, after we go over what's currently in our code, just to give a better idea of what you would like to see in our code in the future in regards to chickens. So the city of Salina, along with these other communities that I mentioned, has seen a significant number of an increase in the number of people keeping chickens. This has been both beneficial to some people, and as well as detrimental to other people for a variety of reasons in its application. The current code that we have has not been updated for well over 20 years, so it is well past time to take another look at, and that's one of the things we're doing here today, is to get your input on this. Currently, the city of Salina allows you to have up to 15 chickens within the city limits. There is no lot size requirement for that number, so it doesn't matter if you have an extremely small lot, or an extremely large lot. It is a flat number of chickens that is allowed within that parcel. There is no permit required currently to keep chickens within the city of Salina. And there are additional requirements that require the chicken coop to be located 50 feet away from any residence, or any other structure. And I'm going to talk about this particular section of the code here in a minute, because it's one of the areas of the code that I'd like to get your input on. There is no, while there is a 50-foot restriction in regards to how far the coop can be from another structure, there is no restriction on where the chickens can go within the property line. So the chickens can be out and be all the way up to the fence line, and there's no restrictions on that. Other communities set a restriction, typically what we see is 10 feet, and we'll talk about that again some more, as we get deeper into this. From April through December, there is a requirement in our code that requires, they call them runways, the areas where the chicken fecal matter comes through, that has to be spated and then limed once every three months. Additionally, there's a specific code provision that requires there to be kept sprayed, to control flies and other insects. Additionally, the city code does not restrict roosters. I would guess roughly about half of the other cities do restrict the keeping of roosters, however, the city of Salina does not. Go ahead and go to the next one. So this is, and I apologize if you're not able to read this in the public as much, this is a chart that I compiled of all these additional 21 cities, plus the city of Salina. If there's some areas on this chart which are blank, in a couple instances, that's because I was unable to, I was able to access, for example, the Dodge City website wants to get a few of their restrictions, I went to flesh this out more, and for whatever reason, I was not able to access their website. Additionally, there's some other areas which are not filled in, that's because those cities, some of them are transitioning between different code services, and in a couple instances, the cities have gone away from a Munich code type of process where it's hosted by a separate company, and they just place the code on their website. I wasn't, I didn't really have the hours to spend going through every section of every code manually, because they now just have it in a PDF. But most of these, I was able to get all of this information, but I wanted to explain to you why you didn't see all the, or why you may see some boxes that don't have information. The areas that I really looked at with these cities were the number of chickens that are allowed, and that really ranged all over the place. Again, there was no city that did not allow the keeping of chickens. The minimum, I believe, was the city of Wichita, which was at three. There were, however, a number of cities at the other extreme, which essentially had no official limit on the number of chickens that could be kept. Now, obviously, that number would be subject to any kind of, you know, root nuisance requirements, and in some instances, where there is no limit, the city does require a permit for the chickens. So if it was determined there were an excessive number of chickens, that could be a factor in the issuing, or non-issuance of a permit for the chickens. In terms of the distance requirement, again, remember, we have the 50-foot in our code that requires the coop to not be within 50 feet of any other structure. Other cities have, it ranges from 25 feet to our 50 feet, there are some that are 75 feet, and there are some that simply don't have any specifications on limits. It really is highly variable in terms of that. You'll notice also in this line, that 10-foot lot line that I mentioned, we do not have that in the city of Salina, therefore, the chickens are able to go all the way up to the lot line, when they're not in their coop. We do not have that restrictions, however, a number of other cities do have a 10-foot lot line restrictions on the chickens. I also look to see, in these cities, whether or not a permit was required. In the majority, a permit was not required, however, there was a number of cities that do require the issuance of a permit in order to be able to keep chickens. Again, we do not require a permit for, to be able to keep chickens. The last column on this chart is what I mentioned before, is whether or not there is a restriction on roosters. Some cities restrict roosters and prohibit them. Obviously, roosters tend to crow at very early hours of the morning, so there's some concerns about that. And other cities which do allow roosters, they may or may not count the roosters towards the overall number of chickens that are allowed, if there is a numeric limit on the number of chickens within that jurisdiction. So I wanted to kind of give you that overview, that information, and I'm happy to go over this in more detail. It was a lot of time to compile it, but thankfully, was able to get some of this information, just to get a better idea of where we stand in comparison to other cities. The cities range in size from, you know, Wichita, Lawrence, Overland Park, to much smaller jurisdictions than Salina, Derby, El Dorado, Gardner, and others. So I wanted to have as broad of a representation as possible for you to have that information.
You have to have roosters to have eggs, right? Tells you how much I know, but...
That is a restriction that, so as somebody who grew up with chickens, we always had roosters, however, there was a period where we had several years where we didn't have roosters. And so, but there are a number of restrictions, or jurisdictions, that say you cannot have the roosters. You may be able to bring them in for short periods, but the keeping of roosters is restricted in a number of jurisdictions.
It sounds like a perfect world to me.
The roosters are dinner. Chickens are eggs.
So as a quick summary, as Sean reported, Salina's current distance requirement is 50 feet. There's five other communities in this survey that are at that same distance. There are two that are at 75, which is more than us, there's four that are less, there's four that don't specify, and then there were six that were blank, and then there are three that in addition to the coop distance, have a 10-foot separation from the lot line, so...
Is there a typical lot size, and what's considered new construction, or what's been being built for the last 10 years and going forward? To me, it seems like our lot sizes are smaller with the new things we build. Is there an acre? Is there...
Well, a typical, a common dimension is 75 by 100, which would be 7,500 square feet, but that varies depending on the subdivision.
And it really just depends, there are some jurisdictions that have a range of number of chickens that are allowed, I believe it was Letha or Lenexa, that has a range of chickens dependent upon the size of the lot, and a parcel that they're located on.
Kind of makes sense to me.
And there is another restriction, or requirement, that is in place in several jurisdictions, Lawrence being one of them, they require three square feet in the coop for the hens. Other jurisdictions, I believe it was, I'd have to go back and refer to my notes, they required two square feet for the hens within the coop. Again, that's not a requirement that we currently have, but that is an additional requirement that other cities have adopted. Go ahead. Any other questions in regards to the chart? I realize it's a lot of information, but... One of the things in the code that I looked at, and here are two really important sections of our code directly in relationship to chickens. Section 7-33 is the restriction that says that you can't place a chicken coop within 50 feet of the nearest portion of any building occupied by, or in any way used by, any other person. That's very difficult to, well, it's a very, very broad definition in terms of its application. And so, one of the things that we looked at was trying to get a little bit more specificity in that, as well as in section 7-58, it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to keep or maintain any animal in any yard, structure, or area that is not clean, dry, and sanitary, free from dries and offensive odors that annoy any neighbor, and devoid of rodents and vermin." On its initial face, this seems fine, but then the difficulty is odors that annoy any neighbor. It really, it lacked any kind of specificity, or defining criteria. So what we looked at was, if you go to the next slide, a couple of potential changes to these codes for your consideration. One of the things we said was, "It shall be unlawful for any person to maintain any chick, chicken coop, pigeon coop, et cetera, et cetera, more than 50 feet, the nearest portion of any," and this is the section that is very broad, "building occupied, or in any way used by any person." So one of the proposals for your consideration is to say, "It shall be unlawful for any person to maintain any chicken coop within, it can't be any closer than 50 feet, to the nearest portion of any dwelling." The difficulty with any kind of building is, particularly if it's a mobile building, it can be very difficult to enforce as far as the locations of those buildings. Or if somebody put a new building up, it would be potentially, it changed the status of whether or not a neighbor could or could not keep chickens, because it suddenly would be within 50 feet. So what we wanted to do was to give you some potential areas to clean up the code. It's going to be important in any kind of enforcement process, that we have a very clean code that we're able to enforce. The highlighted section you see in both of these, the top section 7-33 is the current code, whereas the bottom is the proposed code. The highlight is just a spelling correction to the code, in order to make it clearer, because it says, as you see, it says "shall be so construction." And while I was not an English major, I know that that's not correct, and so we'd just like to correct some of that code, again, to make it clearer. Go ahead to the next slide. 7-58, this is the code section I mentioned before, that says, you basically cannot have any offensive odors that annoy any neighbor. And there was no real definition of that. One of the things we looked at is looking at some of the other codes, some of the cases that have been on file, and in consultation with the city attorney, proposed a drafted section that would essentially establish a reasonable person of ordinary sensibility standard to this. So again, 7-58, at the top in this slide, is the current code, and it says, "It has to be free of offensive odors that annoy any neighbor." What we propose is that it's free from dries and odors which are offensive to a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities, and which adversely or unreasonably interfere with use and enjoyment of the property. And so that's another proposed code modification. Again, just to clear up the code, to make it much more enforceable, and in some cases, to remove ambiguity, or in this case, to make it much more specific in its applicability, instead of having a very broad definition.
So as the code is currently written, offensive odors that annoy any neighbor, that has not been enforced.
I'm sorry, that was...
That has not been enforced. Why?
Well, the difficulty is actually determining what is offensive. I mean, if you want, we can keep this standard, and we can adopt it, and any neighbor would have the ability to restrict anyone from having any chickens if they so choose. That's the standard, but it's a very, very broad standard.
And it also presents a legal quandary of whether it's an enforceable standard, as it's currently written.
Well, I've heard the same complaint with dog waste.
And this is all animals, this is not chicken-specific, and so what, this particular code section would be applicable to dogs and other animals.
So there's a number of areas where you could, we're basically looking for input from the city commission. You have the ability to be more restrictive on allowing chickens, you have the ability to prohibit the keeping of chickens. Here's a number of areas we'd like to get some input from the city commission. Do you want to maintain the current number of chickens that are allowed? Again, the city of Salina, current code allows 15 chickens on any size parcel. Do you want to keep, increase, or decrease the distance from surrounding homes and buildings? Again, that's at 50 feet from the coop, from any building occupied in any way by any other person. That's our current standard in our code. And then, number three, do you want to require permits for chickens? We currently do not require permits for chickens within the city, however, again, a number of cities do require that, and if the city commission gives us direction, we can draft a permit requirement for the keeping of chickens. Do you want to restrict roosters, as a number of other communities have, and if so, do you want to count them or not towards the overall number of chickens that are allowed within the city? Here are some other restrictions that are possible. I mentioned the square foot requirements for coops, this is a requirement, there be either, typically what I've seen is two or three square foot requirements within the coop for all of the hens. This is basically to ensure that you don't have a bunch of chickens compacted into a very small coop. And so, some cities have adopted that standard, requiring either two or three foot per hen within the coop. A yard size limitation. Again, as I mentioned, there are communities that have adopted a floating number of chickens that are allowed, which is dependent on the size of the overall lot. You can have X number of chickens for a quarter of an acre, you can have X number for a half acre, and so that is potentially a requirement that could also be put into place. The next is the lot line requirement I mentioned. We currently don't have any restrictions on how close the chickens can get to the property line, so they can go all the way up directly to the property line when they're not in the coop, and there's no restriction on that. The only restriction is on the location of the coop.
How is that monitored? I mean, if I've got a yard, am I going to have two fences, one that's 10-foot from the other fence, to keep the chickens 10 feet from the real fence?
Yeah, the way it's drafted in other communities is, there's a restriction that says, and the way I've seen it done with others, is there's an additional fence which is put up, or it depends upon the setup of the overall of that particular parcel, but they do require, in other communities, those chickens not have access to the lot lines, and there will be a 10-foot requirement. And so I've seen that in a number of jurisdictions, and I've seen where literally there's a fence within a fence, just in order to be able to meet that requirement within the parcel. And then, if you adopt any new restrictions on chickens, do you want to grandfather either the existing chickens, if, for example, you reduce the number of chickens, and/or the structures, if they were currently allowed? For example, if you increase to 75 feet, the distance that a coop has to be before it is, before it's disallowed, do you want to grandfather existing coops that were already within 50 feet, or would you want to modify the code to basically require moving of that coop to a further distance? So these are just some of the areas that we're looking some input from. There are a number of other sections of the code, the sections that I've coded specifically are just in regards to chickens. However, there are the standard nuisance sections of the code, and other requirements within the code that may not deal specifically with chickens, but still have to be adhered to. You know, if there was a nuisance, for example, or something like that. But these are the specific provisions in our current code in regards to chickens, and the maintaining them within the city limits, and was just looking to see about getting some guidance from the city commission on how you like to approach any modifications to the code as it currently stands.
Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the grandfathering, part of the legal consideration is whether we have a true non-conforming situation where we're required to grandfather, and the conclusion was, this is not a zoning matter, and grandfathering's optional, but not necessarily required?
That's correct. It's, the city actually, even though all other 21 cities currently allow chickens, the city still, under its home rule authority, has the powers to restrict that. However, it does have the ability to adopt those grandfathering standards. It's not as it would be in a zoning situation with a prior non-conforming use, or something of that nature. So you do have wide discretion under your home rule authority, and public health authority to be able to modify these standards as you see fit.
And then I guess I would offer one other observation. Without a permit process, we don't really have a way of knowing how many people currently keep chickens. Anecdotally, we're aware of quite a few, just in passing, between conversations and other information, and our general, we talked with staff a little bit, our general experience is, we haven't received a lot of complaints, a lot of, we have inquiries about what are the requirements, and how many can they have, and how close can it be to the property line, but we're not aware of chickens being kind of a widespread source of complaint. But again, that's anecdotal without a permit process to really know how many chickens we have relative to how much feedback we get.
So with permitting, what kind of an effort or overhead is there for staff, and those that are going to monitor it? It's one thing to register them, but you really can't go out and see if they've limed the property, or if they have too many chickens in too small a space, or how many chickens, they can't do any of that unless we have a permit, right?
We could on a complaint basis, if we're aware that they have chickens, we could, you know, follow up on whether they're compliant, but with a permit process, or we'd be a little bit more standardized, we could, you know, proactively identify who has chickens, and follow up in terms of inspection.
If we had a smaller chicken number, say, six or eight, or made it dependent on lot size, when, say I've got 15 chickens, when some of them die, how long do chickens live? Six years or so? Would you reduce the number down to the, whatever the court code says?
Yeah, I realize I probably said too much. I'll defer that to Sean.
You would have, that would be part of the decision-making. If you wanted to continue to allow people who were, currently had X number of chickens, you could allow them, or you could also adopt a standard that says, as the chickens die out, you go, say, for example, you adopted an eight-chicken standard, as the chickens die out, that could be limited to, you know, the eight chickens, or whatever standard you adopted as they die out. The problem with that is going to be obviously enforcement and knowledge of that, keeping track of individual chickens, and which one they are, it's going to be very problematic knowing which chicken is, I mean, I guess if they're little chicks, you know it's a new one, but I suspect our code enforcement officers are going to find it difficult to determine which chicken was alive at X point in time.
Could I, I'll just fall back on my big-city ignorance, because I did not grow up with them. How long do they live?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm sure we have plenty of people in the...
How long?
Long time.
I mean, we're talking...
Eleven, twelve years.
Oh, seriously?
Well, it differs by the breed, I would guess. It's probably an average, but, you know, there's a lot of different kinds of chickens, I think.
But you've got to realize, the first two years of a chicken's life, they don't lay eggs, so it takes about two years before they start laying, or happy, you know, a year and a half.
According to Google, five to 10 years.
Yeah, and six to eight is often, however, because a lot of people keep them in coops, they're not subject to predators as much, because they live in a coop, so their lives are, tend to be even longer. Depending upon the situation, the larger the coop is, the more, obviously, you have less to worry about in terms of, you know, any kind of infection or something like that, it's not an exclusion. I remember we used to clip chicken wings when I was very young to keep them from, they have limited means of flight. They're not graceful by any stretch of the imagination, but they do have limited means of flight, so sometimes you clip one wing in order to keep them from being to fly out and getting off the property. Obviously, if you don't do that, that decreases significantly the chicken lifespan, if they get off the property. So chickens can live, as she indicated, well over 10 years, six to eight years is very common, but as they live in coops, and if they're in a healthy environment, they can easily reach the 10-year, or even more timeframe, in terms of how long they are alive. the 10-year or even more timeframe in terms of how long they are alive.
So, and just to be clear, understandably, there could be an expectation of grandfathering and trying to take all that into account. Legally, you don't have an obligation to grandfather. You could just have a stair step number over a period of time that would put chicken owners in a spot of, if chickens are living longer, they'd have to figure out what to do with that excess number.
And a bigger coop or so many chickens per square foot of a coop? I suppose they're all going to huddle to stay warm when it's cold, but that's maybe easier to maintain or keep clean and I'm thinking?
It varies. Some jurisdictions, I think, that they adopt a square foot because they want the chickens to not be in a situation like you've seen some of the confined animal feeding operations, CAFOs, where they're just jammed in there. They want the chickens to have a little, literally to spread their rings. It's a phrase, but it's certainly true. So, I think a lot of times that's for the benefit of the chickens themselves. But it does also result in a larger coop being required because dependent upon the number of chickens that are allowed, that then dictates how big the coop is. Typically, though, the space requirements, there is some benefit to having a larger, they're not as compact and so maybe some of the excrement isn't as compacted together. But typically, it also benefits in the view, the chickens, so they're not all crammed into a very small area.
One other question. Was the original reason for the 50-foot distance from a building based on health concerns, diseases, or do you know why the coop was, you know, had to be a certain minimum distance from the house?
I have no idea exactly why we established that. That, I believe, was adopted in 1990. I don't have any indication of why that standard was. As you can see from the chart, there are other communities that have adopted that standard. I suspect, this is just speculation on my part, this was to limit the odors from being as accessible. If you had the coop right up on a property line, the odors would be, obviously, you'd be much closer. So, I believe the intent, and again, this is speculation on my part, was to limit the effect of odors on surrounding neighbors by having the 50-foot requirement. However, the 50-foot requirement also is a flat number, which it doesn't matter what the size of the parcel is. If you have a three-acre parcel, or if you have a really, a very small, tiny home on a very, very small parcel, it's still the same 50-foot requirement for the keeping of any coop.
It appears this 50-foot is pretty standard across the board. And I guess my concern is, city manager indicated we have very few issues or complaints regarding chickens, but what brought us here today is a issue between neighbors. And as I see it, that distance where the chicken coop is, that's where the chickens ought to reside. I feel that there needs to be a distance requirement for where the chickens actually occupy space.
You're talking about essentially from the lot line, when they're not in the coop?
Yes, and, you know, what brought us here today is in section 758, section E, any condition that creates a health nuisance may be impounded or animals and the situation corrected. And, you know, the person who's brought this issue before us has brought a statement from their medical doctor, and it's causing real health problems and there's no cooperation. And their doctor's statement here states that, we received this a few months ago, a couple of months ago. Presence of airborne allergens such as chicken dander, feathers, and fecal matter can trigger respiratory distress and exuberate pre-existing conditions. And that's where we're at today. Without a permitting system and without cooperation, I think it's going to force regulation, which I'm not in favor of over-regulating things. You know, I grew up around chickens as well, and it was kind of entertainment for me as a kid out at my grandma's house. And so...
That is an anecdote I've heard multiple times, that people fall in love with them and like to just sit and watch them, for what it's worth. And so, you know, the doctor's note that you described and the complaint and the code language, we've taken a hard look at that, and I don't want to speak for our legal counsel, but we, given the issues that Sean identified, we did not feel like we were on solid footing to proceed with enforcement. We're kind of, because of some of the code difficulties and we, I lost count of how many people have been, how many staff members have been out and how many times they've been out, but we were unable to independently verify an odor, which just made it that much more difficult. We could certainly improve the clarity of the code and add some regulations. I certainly understand your point about not just the coop, but where the chickens are from the property line. And one thing to take into account, I don't know what that distance is, but if you, if the standard is 50 feet, then a hundred-foot lot doesn't have any remaining space from one side to the other for chickens, which may be fine, that may, maybe the lot should be bigger than that. I am speculating, but I would guess if we went to that standard, we would put a lot of people in non-compliance.
Why do you need 15 chickens? Is this a money-making enterprise or family size? Are you trying to feed somebody? Don't six or eight chickens feed a family? Daily supply of eggs? Just ask them.
Well, don't know the answer to that question without a permit. I can't tell you how, you know, what the average number of chickens is for someone in the community currently.
And we don't have any indication of what the criteria was used to establish the original 15 number limit. There, again, if you look at the chart, you'll see that the numbers range from three to unlimited, so there isn't really a standard number in terms of, and, you know, some chickens, I know this from experience too, some of them lay a lot of eggs, some of them don't lay as many eggs. So, it really is highly dependent upon the egg-laying capacity. Some people may also not be keeping them for egg-laying. They may be keeping them for food purposes. So, it really is situationally dependent upon what the individuals are using the chickens for and what the productivity of the chickens are for. So, it's difficult to really be able to ascertain that without a permit system or any kind of a detailed database that's currently available.
Would this be treated differently if it was being run as a business?
Home-based business has set of regulations that go with it. So, I'm not prepared to say that it couldn't be allowed, but it, and I don't know that it would change the numbers, but we would get into a permit process and zoning questions.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm hearing that the first step should be that there should be a permit required. And, you know, it would make sense that we know who's got chickens and be able to react to that. If the vice mayor was speaking too about the distance surroundings, I mean, I can see the distances, having had a neighbor that firsthand had more than the allowable chickens in his property, I know full well where the, that the coops need to be farther away from all of the buildings. I suppose when you own the chickens, you put up with the aggravation, but to the neighbors, it's disconcerting. And I would restrict the number of chickens and maybe make it dependent on the lot size. And if you had a, if the typical home is 75 by 100 feet, the lot size, then 15 is a lot of chickens for a third of that, that might be the backyard. Some people build their house closer to the street, others put it farther back. So, if you've got three lot or three-acre size, then that's a little different situation.
Personally, I've had experience with neglected barking dogs. And I get very annoyed. I step outside my back door. And I suppose having chickens right outside your back door could be annoying as well.
Certainly roosters, first thing in the morning.
So, just to be clear, is that the, I just want to get some more input from the other commissioners. Yes to potentially drafting code provisions requiring a permit? Yes to having a distance requirement from the lot lines? Is that an agreement of the commissioners or?
I concur.
Okay.
Definitely.
10 feet, I mean, that's the standard that we've seen elsewhere that have that requirement. Are you, and it's also my understanding that, at least from Commissioner Ryan's standpoint, that you're interested in having a shifting amount of number of chickens allowed dependent upon the lot size. Is that correct? Do you want to keep the 15 at like over three acres? Or do you want to have, what is the maximum limit allowed? And do you have any kind of a range idea? Obviously, we can, I can look at this and craft it what others have done, but I didn't know if you had any input on the numbers that?
I'm just sort of offering it as a compromise, but I'm, if the majority would consent to fewer chickens, I could be behind that as well, but.
I would have to defer to your research because I obviously have no experience to even give you a rough estimate. But obviously, the smaller the lot, the smaller, the size, the greater concentration of excrement, you know, which, you know, from my perspective increases the risk of disease and filth.
I think, given the trend of smaller lot sizes, I think it's something we definitely have to look at. And it makes perfect sense that you don't want 15 chickens confined to, I mean, the lot sizes you're talking about, they don't even qualify for a quarter of an acre.
Right.
I mean, it's very, very small by even 30, 40 years ago, the standard. And, you know, that being said, I mean, I can understand the sensibility of wanting to be more self-sufficient, you know, given the pandemic and some of the sourcing issues we had with miscellaneous products. And so, the mindset behind having your own chickens and eggs, I mean, I can totally get behind it, but at some point, we have to look at your rights versus everybody else around you. And at some point, there's a meshing of those where if people are miserable because they're smelling chicken manure, and that's definitely something we need to step in and regulate. As far as registering the chickens, I mean, how would that work? Are we going to register every chicken? Or is it just a grouping or, I guess, flock of said chickens? And I get that because technically, we're all supposed to do that with our dogs or cats, et cetera. A lot of us probably don't.
We haven't talked about that a whole lot, and Sean may have more specifics than me, but I think the expectation would be you're getting a permit to keep chickens, not necessarily down to the chicken, but
That helps.
the size requirements could dictate the number of chickens that you could have. But Sean, what have you seen?
Yeah, it's typically, it's what you see in some communities, if they may not have that specified number, it's, they basically, the difficulty is if you don't have that number, you want to be sure you don't have somebody saying, well, you allow this person to have this many in this one. That's where it becomes very difficult if you don't have a specific number that are or are not allowed. And so, what I'm hearing from you is if we get on that path, we can require a permit pretty much in any of these situations. Or we could allow, you know, only X number of chickens. I'm not recommending this now, but say it's five per third of an acre, you know, and then going up to, you know, 10 for two-thirds of an acre, 15, whatever it is, that would be the range that you would be allowed dependent on the parcel size. That's much easier, it still is going to frankly require more time and effort of the code enforcement, but I think it's, at least if we have that definition, you wouldn't have the situation theoretically, if you had eight people who really wanted to keep chickens and they were all in a very small home situation, you could literally end up with 100 chickens in a very small area if you don't have that either requirement for a permit or requirement on a lot size. The difficulty with the permits is you've got to have some criteria, otherwise you're subject to a challenge of, well, why did you grant this permit, not that one? And it becomes very difficult to maintain that ability to enforce the permit if there is a violation.
If you build a coop, don't you have to have a permit for that as an outside structure?
A permit for what?
For a shed, which would include a coop?
Yeah, there's a size limit, and if you're below that, a permit's not required. So, I'm familiar with some pretty elaborate chicken coops, but quite a few of them I don't know that they need a permit. Or you can purchase a pre-manufactured unit and place it.
We have about 10 minutes left. We have several people here. I'd like to open it up for public comment and keep your comments brief because we are short on time. Yes. Lady behind you is already coming. Yeah, state your name.
I'm Lene Meyer, and I lived in Salina for 40-plus years, and I want to thank you for this opportunity. I was walking by a friend's house one day, and she invited me over for coffee. And sure, so I went up to her house, and I smell this odor, and I thought, what is this? So, she explained the situation of chickens next door. So, and what it was doing to her. I do believe in nature. I like chickens. I grew up with chickens. We need eggs, we need chickens to live on, but I think we also need common sense and we need some compassion. And I really, really, really would like to encourage you to look at a big, big picture here and not just all of the funding and all of that, but also use your intelligence and your emotional maturity and compassion. How would you like to have someone next door to you close by with a very strong odor all the time? And then you invite your friends in, and they're kind of, ugh, I don't want to stay, this stinks. Lots of things to think about. So, I hope you take this seriously, these concerns, and make adjustments that you need to make to make the community better. Thank you.
Brian Metzger, I'm a Salina resident and a chicken keeper. And I too am all about sustainability and self-sufficiency. It's been stated that there haven't, this isn't something that's typically complained about chickens. And this came about because of one issue between some neighbors with odor, and I had just heard when Bill read it, possibly allergies. The same applies with dogs. I have an English Mastiff. If I don't clean up after him on a regular basis, it gets pretty potent and my neighbors are likely to complain. I don't see this as a chicken issue necessarily, but a nuisance odor issue, whether that odor is coming from chickens or dogs or whatever. And I'm willing, if the chicken owner is open to it, I'm willing to help them do some things to reduce the odor, because that can be done. And as far as the allergies, there are a lot of people who are allergic to specific types of trees. If we have a complaint between neighbors about a tree at some point in the future, are we going to start permitting and regulating trees in the city of Salina? I think this is overreach. If we have one issue between two neighbors regarding an odor, that does not mean we need to change everything else.
Rosemary Ma, Salina, Kansas. I have visited this lady that is having the issues with her neighbor's chickens. I walk my dog by her house every day, and like the other lady said, the odor is horrible, especially when the wind comes out of the southwest. I can sit on her front porch last week, Friday, when the wind was so bad. and it was so bad that it'll burn your eyes. And I know the manager said that they've had people go out and couldn't smell anything. Well, you can't go out or you can't smell it if you're only there for five or 10 minutes. You have to be there for a while, and after a while, that odor does get to you, and it will burn your eyes. And I really do believe that some things need to be done. I grew up raising chickens too when I was small, and you have to keep the ground and those coops clean in order to keep that smell down. And I'm quite sure that this neighbor is not doing it because the odor is really bad. And I agree, I think there should be a permit, just like you get a license for your dogs or cats. And I think the permit should be allowed. And also, I think there should be a limit with chickens according to your lot size. Because you can't have fifteen chickens in a small area like this. It just, it's, it's just not feasible. And same way with coops. He mentioned that one of the cities have a two-foot area for each chicken, and I think that is, would help a lot also. Because chick, I know when I was growing up, if a chicken laid an egg, boy, they would flap their wings and was all excited about those eggs laying. So they need room in that coop to flap their wings. But I can remember as a child, I had to go out every week and clean that chicken pen up. If you didn't, it smelled. And it was quite a ways from our house or any neighbors because my parents had a big, big lot. And I just think if you want fifteen, twenty chickens, you need to move to the country. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you have any closing remarks, Commissioner Hennessy?
So just to clarify, you are interested in having the lot line, a new incorporation of that in the code. Are you interested in requiring permits for chickens? Is that a yes or a no from most of the commissioners?
Yes, for me.
Okay.
Yes.
And then yard size limitations, we'll take a look at that and see about drafting some code that would spread out. Do you want to keep the fifteen max but base it upon the size of the yard? Do you want to decrease the number of chickens that are allowed?
Off the top of my head, I'd say fifteen's okay if you've got three or more acres, but maybe six or something like that if it's smaller. I'm just, that's, maybe needs to be studied a little harder.
Yeah, that's something definitely I'd be in favor of, maybe something along the lines of it. I recall one of the other cities had an acre-plus lot you could, would afford them.
True.
A larger number. And I would definitely be in favor just because it's more humane for the chickens, the square footage requirement in the coop. It seems like the right thing to do.
And what about in regards to any existing chickens? For example, if they're on a quarter acre lot and they have fifteen chickens, do you want to allow them to keep indefinitely any number of chickens? Do you want to try to restrict it again to only their current chickens? This is different from a non-conforming use in zoning, but I'm just looking to see in the drafting of the code what you as policymakers would like to see in regards to anybody who would be affected by these chickens. Do you want to make it automatically effective? Or do you want to essentially grandfather them in?
Or you could stair-step it so that they're not grandfathered in perpetuity. It's some timeframe out in the future.
My thought is no grandfathering, but as the chicken, numbers of chickens reduced by, you know, they die of old age, then you come down to whatever that limit is for the lot size.
Essentially allowing the current number, but as the chickens pass away, that would concurrently reduce the number of chickens.
And I think case by case, as issues arise, could apply new code to resolve problems and issues like we're dealing with today.
And I think one other potential resolution may be for, and I forget his last name, but if we have a citizen here who is willing to help the neighbor, if I see the complaining is sitting over your left shoulder, maybe, you know, that may help get the immediate situation resolved some.
He volunteered all right.
Yep.
My chickens don't reek. It can be done. I can assert, he's a good guy.
So as we started the conversation, I acknowledged that we have the Animal Control Advisory Board. I think some of these details can be something that they take up in greater detail and then make a recommendation back to you, so.
Sounds good.
My takeaway is that what I did not hear is doing away with chickens altogether, just refining our approach and adding some additional detail and regulation.
And one other advantage is if, God forbid, there be a health crisis affecting chickens, I mean, the city has a way to notify folks who have chickens. I mean, permitting is not always a punitive issue. It can have benefits as well.
That's true.
Okay, we'll adjourn here and return at 4:00 PM for the regular meeting. Thank you. It's cold in here. Good afternoon. It is four o'clock. Welcome to the November thirteenth meeting of the Salina City Commission. I'll ask staff if the Open Meetings Act notice has been notified.
Yes.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hoppick, Vice Mayor Longby.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, and I'd like to share that Mayor Hoppick lost his mother this afternoon, so if we could remember him and his family.
My pledge of allegiance is as high as the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Brings us to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, proclamation of the month of November 2023 is National Home Care and Hospice Month. Deborah Bangston, owner of Accessible Home Care and Gentiva Hospice, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Correction, Nikki Welch is here with Gentiva Hospice, and Lindsey Webb with Accessible Home Care, along with myself, Deborah Bangston. Whereas the city of Salina recognizes the importance of producing quality care to those who are in need of special medical care, the elderly, terminally ill, post-surgical patients, chronically sick, new mothers, and individuals with disabilities, and the availability of home care and hospice services brings various levels of care to them in a familiar, comfortable setting. And whereas home care and hospice encompass a wide array of health and supportive services and offer compassionate care to more than five million Americans annually, especially during the times of community or personal health care crises. Whereas home care is the patient-preferred care option and plays a vital role in the city of Salina's health care delivery, as many Salinas who are in need of services wish to live independently in their own homes for as long as possible. And whereas home care services allow families to stay together and provide for greater health, dignity, and comfort in our cities. And whereas today caregivers play a central role in our health care system and in homes across the nation. And whereas the home and care community honors the compassionate nurses, aides, therapists, and social workers who work to make the essential difference for those wishing to receive care in their homes, as well as their families, by ensuring that they are able to do so. And whereas both in-home clinical care and support services are cost-effective and prevent emergency or urgent care events, reduce the number of days spent in a hospital, and prevent or delay institutionalization in a nursing home. And whereas hospice services provide important end-of-life comfort and care to those in need and allow patients and their families to have professional, medical, and emotional support services, pain and symptom control and spiritual support, ensuring dignity of patients and time spent in the comfort of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. And whereas the city of Salina joins in the National Observance of Home Care and Hospice Month, and we take this opportunity to honor and support the professionals, volunteers, and family caregivers who show courage and compassion in their important work helping and caring for vulnerable others.
Can you read the rest?
Yeah, that next one is yours.
Thank you. Mayor Hoppick, when he called me this morning concerning his mother, he wanted me to express his appreciation and gratitude to the hospice services they had received. And I personally have had a lot of experience with hospice providers, and it is just a, something I don't know how you do it. And it's really a need and appreciate your service. So you got any events or anything going on to recognize the Hospice Month?
It's home care and hospice, so we're out and about everywhere celebrating with doctors, hospital staff, a bunch of different communities, where we take, taking out cakes and cookies and presentations. We're everywhere this month. Radio addresses, so making sure we say thank you to everybody that delivers this important level of service.
Okay, well, I thank you for the service you provide, and
Thank you.
You want to come, if I have a proclamation signed for you?
Okay, thank you.
You can all come up. You can all come up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, award the bid for updated park trash receptacles in the amount of $147,895.10 and authorize the city manager to authorize the purchase upon the fulfillment of all prerequisites under the purchasing policy. Item 5.2, award a quote for five gas utility vehicles using cooperative purchasing in the amount of $68,011.76 and authorize the city manager to authorize the purchase upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the purchasing policy. And item 5.3, approve the minutes of the meeting of November 6, 2023.
Thank you. Is there any item on the consent agenda or commissioner would like to remove?
Mayor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Brings us to administration.
Item 6.1, approve ordinance number 23-11181 on second reading, approving the execution of amendment number one to the loan agreement between the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and the city of Salina for the purpose of financing improvements to the wastewater treatment plant.
Ordinance number 23-11181 was first passed on November 6. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any comments? Questions from commissioners?
None.
Any comments from the public? May we have a roll call, please?
Better have a motion.
Or a motion.
Mayor, I would move we approve ordinance number 23-11181 on second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11181 on second reading. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Longby.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Brings us to item 6.2.
Item 6.2, approve ordinance number 23-11182 on second reading, approving the execution of a loan agreement between the city of Salina and the state of Kansas for the purpose of financing drinking water service lines inventories to account for any lead service lines.
Ordinance number 23-11182 was first passed on November 6. Since that time, no comments have been received. Any comments from commissioners?
None.
Negative. Comments from the public? See none. We'll bring it back for action.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 23-11182. I guess that does it. Is it also second, on second reading? I guess that does it. Is it also on second reading?
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-1118182, second reading. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Longby.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. And that brings us to item 6.3.
Item 6.3, authorize the city manager to execute agreements with Fire Facilities, Inc. for the cost of materials in the amount of $35,836 and JTL Construction in an amount not to exceed $6,600 for labor associated with repairs to the city of Salina Fire Department Training Tower for a total cost not to exceed $42,436.
Thank you. Chief Sprague.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Drew Sprague, Division Chief of Training at the Salina Fire Department. Back in November of last year, we had our five-year inspection on our training tower. The inspection resulted and highlighted that need repairs for our installation and our paneling for our live burns. If you guys don't know, we have a tower downtown and in the back north, I'm sorry, the north side of it, we have a burn room, and that's where we conduct live fire. It's a controlled area, so we can kind of do any techniques that we'd like to do. Without these repairs, we can't use that anymore. It's just, in the five years, it's gone through its lifespan, I guess I'll say. Finances for this, back in 2023, we budgeted for some bailout harnesses, which is another piece of equipment that we would use for safety for our guys. It's used for emergencies and can aid in rescuing down firefighters by RIT, which is a rapid intervention team. However, we were allocated $4,200, and the reason for that was just, I think on my part, the form wasn't filled out great. On the sub-CIP form, there were some misunderstandings on what we actually needed as opposed to what we were being asked for. So, we were awarded the $42,000. What we would like to do is use that money, which would be allocated from Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund to help fund this, and then we would use the remainder of that money from our budget from this year. Do you guys have any questions for me?
You just did have live fire training last month, is that correct?
We did, yes. Yes, we had it for our six new recruits.
And you used the tower then?
We did, yeah.
Okay. Any questions from Commissioners?
No.
No questions. Well, I have a concern.
Yes, sir.
In the fact that the difference between the low bid and the high bid was, the low bid and the next bid was like four times as much.
Yep. So, in the item there, we were, I contacted the Fire Facilities, and they recommended that we use some of their experienced contractors. As you see, those bids were anywhere from $22,000 to $53,000. They're all out of state, so they would have to pay for people to come here, and the cost of that to get them here to do those repairs. After I expressed our concern with them, they said, okay, we'll find a contractor that you feel can do the work. I talked to the owner of JTL Construction, walked them through our burn room. I also offered it to a couple of our contractors in town, never heard anything back from them. And that owner of JTL Construction was comfortable doing the work, as they will send details on how to install that.
So, everyone is comfortable and confident that
Yes.
they can do it, and this extra money was travel and
Yes.
lodging expense.
First class.
And it could be for more than one person. The JTL Construction is an individual, so it's not going to be as expensive with one person as opposed to multiple people doing it.
Okay. Any questions from? Thank you. Any comments or questions from the public? See none. We'll bring it back for action.
Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to execute agreements with Fire Facilities, Inc. for the cost of materials in the amount of $35,836 and with JTL Construction in the amount not to exceed $6,600 for labor associated with repairs of the city of Salina Fire Department Training Tower. The overall cost shall not exceed $42,436. We are also asking, authorize the city manager to reallocate the 2023 sub-CIP funds in the amount of $42,000 planned initially for bailout harnesses to training tower repairs.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize city manager to execute agreements with Fire Facilities Incorporated for the cost of materials in the amount of $35,836 and with JTL Construction in the amount not to exceed $6,600 for labor associated with repairs to the city of Salina Fire Department Training Tower. The overall cost shall not exceed $42,436. We're also asking you to authorize the city manager to reallocate 23 sub-CIP funds in the amount of $42,000 for the initial bailout harness to training tower repairs. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0, and I think that's money well spent to train our people. Brings us to item 6.4.
Item 6.4, award the low bid for construction of the new sanitation equipment storage building.
Mr. Coawke.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Jim Coawke, Operations Manager for Public Works. We're here before you this morning, or this afternoon, to talk about awarding the low bid for our sanitation building. We've made, excuse me, a lot of improvements over the last several years. Been before you many, many times, talking about the new side-load automated trucks, the new carts, purchase of the recycling center, and have been working on a equipment storage building, plans for it for over two years. So, we've been in front of you several times before. We have six automated trucks, and then we demolished a Quonset storage building, so we plan on replacing, or installing, an eight bay, we call it an eight bay, but for the six trucks and then some storage for our streets department. Instead of eight bays, we actually went with four 26-foot doors, so they're kind of double bays, but that way each one can hold two automated trucks, and then we have just additional clearance for backing, and it just makes it safer for them getting into a larger door size. We've accomplished a lot trying to get to this point. We've demolished the old galvanized steel Quonset hut. We've relocated our salt spreader storage racks. We went to the Board of Zoning Appeals and got a variance. We've got the building permits, and we were optimistic, I guess, or quite honestly, I was misinformed. In November of 22, November 22 of 2021, we thought that we could get this building and the relocation stuff done for $375,000. And I know Commissioner Lenkowitz asked me if that was a red iron building, and I assured him that it was. Well, it wasn't. That was a kit building, more of an Agstiba-style building, but we've been working closely with Troy Reiner, our facilities manager for the Parks Department, and he hired a local architect, M Squared Architect. I know Mr. McCall's here today if you have any questions for him, but we did spec out a building that will last us, an industrial-type building that will last us. It is insulated, it'll park the six trucks, it will have a wash bay, which currently we're having to take our vehicles out to the interstate to wash them, out at the big truck wash, because our wash bays aren't large enough. It'll have a mechanics pit to where we can at least do some minor maintenance on them. A lot of, these trucks are so advanced, or that a lot of the work has to be done at the dealership, but I know our Kino Wallace, our mechanic superintendent for the shop, does a lot of work on them. They go through a lot of tires, just with those big, heavy loads, and they kind of skid around the corners. They go through a lot of tires, so it's quite a job just maintaining them. But we were optimistic we could get it done for $375,000. We came back a year later, which was just fall of '22, and thought, well, the building is going to cost us $435,000. And we really didn't have anything to base it on, because we hadn't bid anything, and there was so much other construction in town. It was just hard to get an estimate. But we moved forward, we got the plans, we advertised this summer, finally got the project let, and there was good competition for the project. We were really pleased. We had five bidders. The low bidder is a local construction company that's done a lot of work for the city, Pawton Construction. The low bid was $764,530. We weren't real sure we could afford the mechanics pit, so we bid that as an add alternate. That was bid at $47,712, which all five bids were relatively close. The low bid was $764,000, the high bid was $899,000. Now, the way the architects set up the plans and stuff, it does include the $40,000 contingency in the base bid. That way, they can get the right fixtures and attachments and those kinds of things as the building goes up. There won't be an addendum or any additional money added to this. It's in the base bid. We want to make sure it was included, so it's about 5% of the project. We went from $375,000 two years ago to $540,000 last year, and now with the add alternate and the contingencies, we're at $812,000. The low bidder, I know you mentioned the concern, is quite a bit lower than the other bids. We're confident they can accomplish the work. They're excited to get started. They had one of the shortest construction times, and we are wanting to get this built before next fall, so that we can actually store the trucks next winter, and we think that we can accomplish that. Labor and materials with just all the construction here in town is crazy. We just, we did the best with our estimates. Back in 2021, when we talked about $375,000, the commission did approve a 15 cent per month, per customer rate hike to bond that $375,000. So, we've been collecting that. That's been making our sanitation fund balance get bigger. We've been saving our money for those rainy day purchases. The sanitation fund is about $3.75 million, their budget. And typically, we've had a $500,000 target fund balance, and talking with Mr. Sprague, City Manager, and our finance director, we felt like with, especially the volatility we had in fuel last year, that we needed to bump that up to 20%. So, one of the things we're asking for is just official, changing our target fund balance from $500,000 to $750,000, just to have more stocked away, because the sanitation service is an enterprise fund, and they pay for everything that they're doing. So, it's good, because they buy one Packer truck every year, and we're about halfway into our automated truck, so in three or four more years, we're going to have to buy six more of them. We bonded them, the bond payment's in our current fee structure, but we'd like to get to a point where we have enough to where we can start buying those trucks with cash rather than bonding them because of the interest costs. So, we're asking you to raise our target fund balance from $500,000 to $750,000, and even raising that target fund balance. Ms. Pack, our finance director, projected a $1.6 million fund balance at the end of the year. That'll give us over $850,000 above our target. There are lots of options as far as financing this building. We are collecting the 15 cents, which was intended to bond $375,000. So, you can bond $375,000 and pay cash, $437,000 and some change, and reduce our fund balance. You could choose to bond the whole thing. There are some pretty extreme costs in interest if you choose to bond the whole thing, and with the cash in the bank, it doesn't really make sense to do that. But you could also choose to pay cash for the whole thing and not bond any of it, or anything in between. It's kind of, those are the options, is you can use the $375,000 with the bond authority that was passed in 2021. You can bond the whole thing, or you can pay cash for the whole thing, or anything in between. The building, we're really excited about getting it started. We've just been, it's been a grueling summer trying to get those salt racks relocated. Our crews, in addition to all the street repairs, have been trying to get that done and out of the way. We have the Quonset hut demolished, anxious to get going, and there is a need for the building. So, with that, I will stand for questions. I know Mr. McCall, the architect's here, and Mr. Pawton, the contractor's here, if you have any questions for them.
Yeah, I can attest, there has been a lot of work done over there preparing for this, and it's a well-needed building to protect our investment in the trucks. Will there be heat in the building, or will?
Yes, it will be heated.
Okay.
And it's just a minimal. It's not like short-sleeve weather, but it's just 50 to 60 degrees to keep it above freezing, and that way it's easier to start and keeps the hydraulics to where they're, in the wintertime, easier to get going in the mornings.
Yes, I know that was a big reason for the, with the new trucks to
Yeah, it's insulated and heated.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions for Commissioners? Just on the financing, is this a situation where it would actually make sense for just to pay cash out of reserve fund, and I'm asking all the financial powers-to-be that we have on our fold?
You certainly have options. I think I'm probably a little guilty of being mindful of, if you paid cash, that draws the fund balance down considerably. And then, we also did say that we were going to increase rates to finance it. So, trying to keep true to that original intention of the rate increase, essentially, the recommended approach would be, go ahead and debt finance the amount that we originally intended and draw on the reserve balance to fund the difference. That does incur interest costs, that, you know, you've got lost interest earnings if we pay cash compared to the interest cost of borrowing. But from my perspective, that felt the most consistent with the original direction that we were given, and that we indicated to you as staff in terms of the need for the rate increase and the intent of the rate increase.
I guess if my bill went up a little bit, and I knew that the building was paid for, I'd probably, you know, forgive the original intent of the increase if I didn't have to pay. How much interest was it?
It was a
$176,863. I like the cash option. That's a lot of money to, unless there's some other expenditure that you're anticipating that fund balance to have to be used.
We were at $500,000, and we drew it down quite a bit, because we did pay for all of the new carts, $1.2 million. We did pay for the recycling center, $263,000 or whatever it was. We spent it down, and we are starting to save for our truck replacements, which are kind of already in our fee structure, but it's, we're bumping it up from $500,000 to $750,000, so we're already being more conservative than we had been as far as the official policy. And I will remind you that you guys did raise the rates on our second carts by $1 per cart, and that in itself will raise another $75,000 or $80,000 next year, just increasing our fund balance, so.
Could we pay cash and raise the increase 25 cents? Would that put us closer to level?
If you're inclined to pay cash, I think you certainly have that discretion, and my suggestion would be, give us that direction. We, as we look at year-end and fund balance, I don't think we have to make any immediate decisions about additional rate increases. We can factor that into future budgeting. The one thing that I would point out is that that interest cost is truly the interest cost, but the actual cost is the nominal difference between our interest earnings on the money in the bank compared to our borrowing cost. So, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but there's a net difference there.
Still, I'm not too thrilled about borrowing money in this environment.
Sure.
Understood. I am curious if we pivot, how far back, or is that going to set our timeline? Is that going to put us at risk of having like additional increases? And, I mean, it's just the same story, different day, of added labor costs, sourcing, you know, materials, et cetera, et cetera. So, if we pivot, how far back are we going to be on our timeline? And is that going to shoot us?
Yeah.
We have an option here.
Looking to Finance Director Debbie Pack a little bit in terms of kind of the assumptions that are in place and how this might impact them.
Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. If you chose a cash function, once you sign the contract, we're going to encumber those funds. Those funds are available in the fund balance today. So, all that's going to do is lower the fund balance at the end of the year. That could go below the $750,000 target, but it may not. And as we add those fees, that additional 15 cents that we've already been collecting, that's going to keep adding to that fund balance and get it back up to that reasonable amount pretty quickly, I would think.
We're just writing the check, expedite getting started on the project?
I don't, I doubt it. That would be a question for the contractor, but I doubt it. No, either way, either way we finance it, it's not going to increase the functionality of the contract itself. We're committing to make the payment, no matter how we finance it. They don't care.
And we do, we do, especially in this environment, feel really fortunate. We had five bidders, but even, and we run into this every day, that materials are taking longer and longer to get. So, you know, we want to get a contract signed and let the contractor order their materials, so that so that they can be prepared to really do what they can this winter, but, you know, hit the ground running next summer when the, when the weather's better, so.
And, you know, as I read this, you know, with the, we anticipate additional growth in the fund in, next year with the additional tipping fees, and, uh, I'm in favor of paying cash.
So, we, we have two different operations, we have sanitation, and then we have landfill. So, tipping fees is in a different enterprise fund than sanitation. But we, we do anticipate growth in the fund, in the sanitation fund.
Go ahead, if you state your name, please.
Yeah, Mike McCall with M. Scott Architects. Just on process getting started, the sooner the better. I just had some updates from the contractor the other day that metal prices are getting ready to go again up. So, if we don't get the building locked in soon, then we're gonna have some additional pricing increases on the building itself. And that's pretty typical, the way most of the materials have been going over the last several years, especially this last year. They just, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, I haven't heard yet, but there will be an increase coming soon.
And this will be an all-metal building?
All-metal building, yes, it'll be full-metal building with, uh, fully insulated, so. It's a, it'll be a good building to last for, and we've got it designed to expand, so we can expand to the west in the future as we, as we grow as a city and add more trucks. We can add actually two more bays to this building, um, so we can accommodate it, so.
Questions, Mr. McCall?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, we've, we've talked about the options as far as bonding, part of it, and paying cash, paying cash for the whole thing, and then bonding the whole thing, which is, there's no need to do that. We have asked you also just to formally approve raising the target fund balance from seven hundred and fifty thousand to, or from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand, so. Approve the contractor, allow Mike, or assign Mike to sign the contract, determine what kind of funding source to use for the building, and then also just officially, um, changing our fund balance, the policy.
So, I'm assuming then the consensus of what we're feeling would be option number three here?
Yes, based on what I'm hearing from you, I think you're gravitating around option number three, which would be pay cash.
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Bring it back for action.
Mayor, I move, uh, to approve the target sanitation, sanitation fund balance, be increased from five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and approve the low base bid and add alternate one bid for the new sanitation building, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of eight hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars with Ponton Construction Incorporated from Salina, Kansas, funding out of cash reserves in the sanitation fund.
Second. We have motion in a second to approve the target sanitation fund balance be increased from five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand, and approve the low best, base bid and all, add alternate one bid for the new sanitation building, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of eight hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars with Ponton Construction from Salina, Kansas, funding out of cash reserves in the sanitation fund. Call and favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Good luck on the building. Brings us to item six point five.
Item, excuse me, item six point five, approved charter ordinance forty-three on first reading exempting the city of Salina from certain parts of chapter three oh eight, Senate Bill five oh eight of the session laws of nineteen thirty-seven, as amended by chapter two fifty, Senate Bill three forty-one of the session laws of nineteen thirty-nine, and act authorizing certain cities of the first class to convey certain property to the Board of Education of such city.
Mr. Hennessy.
Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Managers. Pull up the map. What we have before you today is a charter ordinance, I'm gonna give you a little bit of, a background and history on the, on this particular tract of land right here. What you see here is a section of land which is called South Park. This is bordered by Second and Third Street, and on the north by Walnut Street, uh, on the south by Mulberry Street. This tract of land, at the time of incorporation of the original city of Salina, was dedicated, uh, for a use as a parkland. That continued on, and then, in nineteen thirty-seven, the state legislature passed a law, and I'll talk about this more in a minute, that allowed the city of Salina to transfer that to what eventually became US, the Unified School District. The, um, in nineteen thirty-eight, the city then recorded, or actually executed a deed that transferred that property to the school district. Now, there's a couple important things that I need to talk about in this, because it kind of gets confusing. The, so there was, in this original tract, it was originally supposed to be dedicated as parkland. In nineteen thirty-seven, the legislature adopted these two laws that allowed the city to transfer this to what became the school district. The, um, therefore, the city did not maintain ownership of that property since that time. However, the nineteen thirty-seven, and I'll talk about the thirty-nine law here in just a second, they required that the, this tract was supposed to be used for school purposes, okay? The, and that is when the city transferred the ownership of the land, um, to the school district. The thirty-seven, typically when you see a charter ordinance, which is what we're looking at here today, there's a specific statutory section, uh, that the city is interested in chartering out. This is an oddball, to be frank with you, because this is a session law that was never codified. It was, it was a law that was adopted by the legislature, and that as far as the city attorney has been able to determine is still in effect, but, um, I mean, it was never codified in a specific statutory section. So, what this charter ordinance seeks to do, included in the thirty-seven, um, legislation that was adopted, is a reversionary interest for the city that requires the property to be used for school purposes. That's what the, the thirty-seven legislation requires. And again, then in nineteen thirty-eight, the city executed a deed which also had a reversionary interest that required it to be used for school purposes. What this charter ordinance does, it removes the reversionary interest only from the nineteen thirty-seven, uh, legislation. The, let me explain also the, the thirty-seven and thirty-nine, although part of this is speculation because we don't have complete information going back that far. The nineteen thirty-seven legislation, this is all obviously way before home rule. And at that point in time, what the legislature would do, and still does in many other states, is they will draft a statute or a law which by definition only applies to one city. And that's essentially what it appears they did in, in the nineteen thirty-seven legislation. They did that by the population of the city. It has to be in a city of the first class with a population only of X amount, it has to be within a county of this population, and when you look at it, it only applies to one city. It appears, and this is where we're speculating, in nineteen thirty-nine, they amended it because the, the population numbers had changed. So, that is what the nineteen thirty-nine adoption of the legislative law, uh, modified the population numbers for which city it would apply to. They still only applied to Salina, but we believe, and again, this is speculation, that the original thirty-seven legislation didn't have the correct population numbers at that point in time. So, what this charter ordinance does, like I said, is the property now is, is owned by the school district. There are two reversionary interests on the property. There is a reversionary interest which is included in the nineteen thirty-seven legislation, and there is a reversionary interest which is included in the nineteen thirty-eight deed. What this charter ordinance does is it removes the reversionary interest from the nineteen thirty-seven legislation. However, the nineteen thirty-eight deed reversionary interest remains, um, on this property. That will be something that'll be subject to, uh, a negotiation between the city and the school district, uh, in the future. And again, just, uh, for anyone who's listening, a reversionary interest, a, a brief way to describe it is, is an interest in a property that if some certain act doesn't occur or does occur, then that property goes back to the city. So, this reversionary interest in this case requires it to be used solely for school purposes. And this charter ordinance will remove the reversionary interest from the nineteen thirty-seven legislation, but the nineteen thirty-eight reversionary, um, interest in the deed is a separate reversionary interest and will still remain in effect. I realize that's very confusing when you look at the dates. In nineteen thirty-seven, you had, uh, the legislation, uh, allowing the transfer of this. In nineteen thirty-eight, you had the deed that transferred the property from the city to the school district. In nineteen thirty-nine, you had an amendment to the legislation due to the structure of the population not being correct, we believe, in the nineteen thirty-seven legislation. And then, and again, this is speculation, the actual deed was recorded in nineteen forty-six. There probably were some problems during World War Two with this, so we assume that's the reason why the deed was originally recorded then, in nineteen forty-six. I realize that's kind of confusing, uh, but the end result of all this would be, the city would still have a reversionary interest in the property, uh, subject, in, included in the nineteen thirty-eight deed, that, uh, the city could negotiate with the city if it's interested in the future, but that reversionary interest would remain in effect. However, the reversionary interest in the nineteen thirty-seven legislation would be removed by this charter ordinance. And again, I realize you all are familiar with this, but, uh, essentially what chartering out is, under our home rule authority, if laws do not apply uniformly to cities, uh, across the state, then under the home rule authority, cities have the ability to adopt a charter ordinance, which is chartering out, which means that that is, uh, no longer applicable. And this charter ordinance would remove that reversionary interest from the nineteen thirty-seven legislation. However, the rest of the legislation would, uh, would not be removed by the charter ordinance. So, I'm happy to take any questions if you have any, I realize it's kind of confusing when you start hearing all these dates.
Not confusing at all. Any questions from commissioners?
The dates were not the confusing part.
No chickens, though, that's important, so.
Any questions?
I don't think so.
Well, I'll, I'll give the history that I know of that parcel. What once stood there was Washington High School, my dad was the last graduating class from that school. The building that still remains to the north, my sis, was used as the special education center, and my sister spent her whole school years going there, so. It was used as, as a school.
Yes. It's still, the building is still used for a school purpose. This, as Sean indicated, this would allow us to then start to have a conversation with the school district about the reversionary interest, the vacant portion of that property, and future, uh, uses of that property.
If I may, Vice Mayor, also to your, to your point, uh, on either end of the block, as you know, on the north end, there are those, uh, series of residences. Those are not included within the property that we're speaking of. And the Washington High School, uh, where my father graduated from.
With my father in the same class?
Yeah, in the same class as Commissioner Ryan's father.
And I have a brick from that school that my dad got at a reunion.
The only point I wanted to make, just to make sure there wasn't any confusion, those, uh, the school district acquired those lots separately, uh, prior to construction of Washington, that building. So, they, it was not located on the property that we're speaking of, it was independently acquired by the Board of Education.
Those are the ones on the south?
Uh, yeah, that, the series of, they're platted residential-type lots, but they were all acquired by the, the Board of Education, and that's, uh, the lots upon which, it's hard to imagine that a structure that large was on the end of that block. Much like Lincoln and Roosevelt, there was a building of that scale at the end of that block that is now certainly open ground at this point in time. But, uh, what is the, what was designated as the South Park area begins at the north edge of those lots that front on Mulberry, and, uh, small point, but just so you, everybody, everyone knew that those lots are not in the area that we're speaking of.
Yeah, that, that reversionary interest does not apply to those lots under the nineteen thirty-eight deed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? See none? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve charter ordinance number forty-three on first reading. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve a charter ordinance number forty-three on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Brings us to no development business, other business, any commissioners have an item not on the agenda? Hell, I have one. Back in July of this year, we heard a proposal about installing a safe haven baby box for newborn infants at one of the fire stations, from Tiffany Moss. Over the weekend, I read a horrifying story out of northern Nebraska of an infant that was, newborn infant that was killed, and, uh, it just turned my stomach. So, I wanted to follow up and see if any action has been taken on installing, getting proposals to install the safe haven baby box where a, a mother could surrender a newborn with no consequences at a local fire station. And I've been told by Ms. Moss that, uh, there can be no cost to the city, and funding, fundraising should not be an issue, so. If Chief Snyder would have any updates on this?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. So, uh, I actually spoke with Tiffany today, um, this is sort of the fourth or fifth time we've spoken. And understand that this, as, as well as she presented this process, it's not as easy as that, it's not as simple as that. So, you know, when you look around the state, the House bill twenty, twenty twenty-four got passed last March or April, I believe it was, at the state level, which was really a modification to allow these boxes to be put in place and to allow certain legal protections for the mothers and the infants. I also, you said that you read this article. I have to tell you from personal experience, first off, I was adopted. Thankfully, my parents took me to the Catholic charities and I was adopted. But more to, more to my point is that soon after my wife and I were married, we had difficulty having children, and you should have seen the distress that she went through when we would watch the news to see babies found in a dumpster, babies found here, babies killed. So, I applaud you for following up on this personally, thank you. But I do want to express the, I won't say difficulties, but the trials and tribulations that I have to go through to ensure what we do is our due diligence as to location and a number of so many factors. So, I did prepare a little brief, if you, uh, care, I would like to read it, uh, to give you some insight. Implementing a baby box program is a critical initiative to ensure the safety and care of infants in our community. The program requires meticulous planning in terms of logistics, infrastructure, and strategic placement to maximize accessibility and effectiveness. Secure and climate-controlled units, which there are multiple, multiple vendors with these different units, different names and whatnot. The priority's gotta be the safety and comfort of the infants if placed in one of these units. Baby boxes will be able to maintain stable environments irrespective of external weather conditions. Baby boxes will be able to maintain stable environments irrespective of external weather conditions. Alarm systems, we have to figure out how we can work with that so that not just that station gets alerted, but the call center gets alerted. We can't have our folks out on a dispatch and nobody there, so that's part of. So there's all these little technical things that become big technical things that have to occur. There's also privacy considerations. So we have to ensure that we provide some amount of privacy as best we can for the location of a baby box. Accessibility would have to be twenty-four seven. We'd have to have surveillance of said boxes, so it's another technology issue. I believe we have, for the most part, the medical equipment at each of our firehouses. However, there is training involved that our folks would have to go through. And Tiffany and I have spoken about that. That would be provided as well for our folks. And this is bigger than us. This is not just the Salina Fire Department. You know, my goal would be to reach out to the Health Center and some of the other local entities and to make this a community-type thing. Community involvement is vital to the success of Salina and the Salina Fire Department. So there's maintenance involved. You have signage and information, the training, as I mentioned. There's also legal and ethical protocols that have to be gone over. There's contracts that have to be signed, so they're going to have to be reviewed. The partnerships, which I just touched on, identifying the ideal placement. Now, if you do any reading on this, you'll see that they recommend firehouses, medical facilities, hospitals. Police stations are never mentioned, and I get that. So is one of our firehouses the best location? I'm not so sure yet. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it is or isn't yet. But I have to do all this background work in order to to come to you and say, this is what we believe is our best plan. So it takes time, and as you know, there's a lot of other things on our plates. So by utilizing a comprehensive approach and trying to address immediate infant needs and broader social, legal, and ethical considerations, strategic planning, placement, and robust logistical support are keys to the success of this program. It will happen. It just takes time. I want to make sure that we do it right, and when we present it, it is done in the best way for the interest of that infant and the challenged parent as well. There are other things that are involved with that as well. So with that, I'd answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
No, any questions, more of a comment. I think it's a smart approach to, instead of get it done, get it done and see what sticks. I mean, this is obviously a very vital situation that needs to be done correctly, and appreciate you doing your due diligence and making sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted.
Thank you, sir.
Questions?
Just curious, have we had any babies abandoned?
So I asked Chief Pearson that earlier today, and he said in his career, he doesn't know of any that we were necessarily involved with, so I can't answer other than that. I will tell you that, you know, this is growing, and it's growing exponentially. Back in January, I believe the estimate was a hundred and thirty-four, only a hundred and thirty-four around the country. So it's growing. It's making an impact, and this is vital. And like I said, from a personal experience, it hits home.
And a little background in here that drove this legislation in Kansas is an infant was discovered in, right down here in McPherson. And McPherson is really working to get one of these installed as well, so.
Chief Weissman is, it's installed but not up and running yet because there are some issues he's facing. I've spoken to him. You know, I'm aware of what Chief Beer is doing, and they're doing it differently than what we would do. They're taking on the raising the funds themselves and trying to put it, you know, within Hutch. So there are avenues for us, and like I said, Tiffany and I have spoken, and it's really to the point now where, you know, I've got the groundwork kind of started. It's more a matter now of sitting down and going, okay, next steps. So what are our action items moving forward? So, but we are moving forward, but I want to do it right.
And I apologize because the reason I brought this up was this story. It just turned my stomach, and I thought we let this slip through the cracks.
I can tell you we didn't, sir.
You're on it.
Thank you.
That brings us to Citizens Forum.
If I may, I need to make sure my microphone's on.
Oh, yeah, we've got other business.
Right.
How are we going to skip that?
So we'd like to give you some background on an issue that I'm sure you're aware of. It became a topic of conversation over the last week, and that is the Cozy Inn artwork and mural slash sign that's been initiated on the, I guess it'd be the north side of their building. So have some background information for you. I would tell you that I think staff made first contact with Mr. Howard, who's here, owner and operator of Cozy's, is here, made first contact with him last week. And then we met with Mr. Howard and his artist this morning and kind of walked through the same information that I'm going to share with you at this point. So, and it started by acknowledging that I understand it's becoming an emotional issue for some, and it's been a hot topic of conversation in social media and the radio. I want to give Mr. Howard credit. He's adamant that that wasn't his doing, that wasn't his initiation, that wasn't his intent. But it did start, you know, kind of a community conversation. So want to clarify a couple of things right off the top. The issue is not about the art. The issue's not about the artist. I think there were some comments made that the artist hadn't been approved or the art hadn't been approved. And that's really not what's at play here. I would tell you as well that there are examples of very similar issues as it relates to what constitutes art, what constitutes a sign, how does free speech get involved? How can signs and art be regulated? That is a difficult issue that's playing itself out coast to coast. So not necessarily unique to Salina. The important distinction here relates to commercial speech and our ability to regulate commercial speech or signs, and then specifically how we do that by way of the codes that we have in place. Won't go into great detail, but there's a U.S. Supreme Court case that provided us clear direction, provided the nation clear direction, that sign regulation has to be content neutral. And I think some of you are on the Planning Commission and the City Commission as we worked our way through that a couple of years ago, trying to modify our code to be sure that we met that content-neutral requirement. So, you know, that's important in that we don't get to look at a sign and what it says and what it looks like. We just need to have codes that apply across the board regardless of any specific content parameters. And so there's certainly, it is a misunderstanding between art and signs and commercial speech. And I would acknowledge that signs can be artistic, some more artistic than others. This one in particular is very artistic in terms of kind of the theme and where it's headed with the image. So despite all the emotion and kind of the confusion surrounding it, we do not regulate based on content, aesthetics, the particular business in question, nor social media or a petition process, and we just have to administer it based on the codes that are in effect. Our codes in this particular case have been in effect since nineteen sixty-six. Doesn't mean that they can't be changed, but the codes that we currently have have been in effect since nineteen sixty-six, and we regulate based on size. So by zoning category, that then dictates kind of the mathematical formula that gets applied. That then determines the maximum size of signs in total, not just an individual sign, but kind of the aggregate size of those signs that's allowed. And I am going to call on Lauren Driscoll to walk you through the specifics as it relates to Cozy's. And so that then kind of sets size limits in proportion to the building or more specifically the building frontage. So in this particular case, Cozy currently has three permitted signs, and they use up eighty-four percent of their allowable space by our current code. The proposed sign, in combination with those other three signs, would put them at about nine times the allowable size. So it really becomes a function of the size of that, that artwork and signage relative to our current code provisions. In terms of possible next steps, we discussed these with Mr. Howard and his artist. First and foremost is submitting a sign application. So we have the specifics of what they intend, and we can take a look at that relative to the code. But we do know just from what's on the sign and the renderings that have been shared, it's going to be more than just submitting an application for approval. We do have a disconnect between what they intend and what our code currently allows. Couple of other options that are just generally available in the zoning code are applying for a variance or proposing a code amendment. We discussed the variance process, and there is a statutory set of criteria that the Board of Zoning Adjustment has to reach findings on all five of them that they're met. And that makes it problematic in terms of this particular instance. It has to be a unique, it has to be something unique in terms of an insurmountable challenge or something that that the code might not have taken into account. There has to be an undue hardship. Some of those standards are pretty high bars. And we told Mr. Howard, we're not saying you can't apply for a variance. We're not saying what the outcome might be, but knowing what we know about kind of that criteria in our history, doesn't seem likely that a variance would be granted. In fact, staff shared that our only knowledge of a signed variance that has been approved relates to a location where the ground falls off so quickly from the roadway that it had to be allowed to be taller than the code might allow just to get in a normal scale relative to the driving surface. The other option, the code amendment, we have a process whereby someone can make application or request a code amendment. Looking at it in first blush, that probably either to accommodate what's being, what Mr. Howard desires, we'd need to increase the allowable square footage nine to ten times what our code currently says, or we would need to come up with some allowance to cover a wall pretty much in its entirety, or possibly even all four sides of the building in its entirety. And that starts to get very customized, very detailed. And the key factor there is it has to be applicable across the board. We can't, we're not in a position to create a carve-out specific to a particular business. And so whatever we come up with would need to allow the proposed sign. It would need to apply equally to others in a similar situation. Again, regardless of its content, regardless of its aesthetics, regardless of the specific business. And I would reiterate, it's all on the basis of a commercial message. So while we may have one sign that feels much more artistic than another, these size limits could be just pricing and more typical business sign text than than kind of an art artistic flair. I don't, I think it's lost on you. That's a pretty significant policy decision. It's going to take some work. We will, we're prepared to staff that through in terms of code drafting, running it through the necessary committees for recommendations, but then it ultimately would end up back at the City Commission level for consideration of an amendment to our code. As I said, we're definitely willing to do that. It won't be quick. I think there is a lot that we might be able to learn from other communities, and if they've been able to find a creative way to come up with codes that kind of address the balance that we're trying to strike here. Part of the conversation will be, while that may be acceptable in this particular location, does it open it up for other locations? And so we would need to spend some time kind of looking at all the possible scenarios so that the Planning Commission and the City Commission have a good understanding of what that code change might allow. And so we have, Lauren had some contacts in planning, and we'd already identified the need to take a look at this and had it on her plan of work for twenty twenty-four. Wasn't necessarily on the plan of work for the coming week or before year end, but she is aware of some planners that specialize in this, reached out to one of them last week to try to see if we can expedite some of that conversation. We're hoping to have a proposal back in the next week or two, but the preliminary conversation, Lauren can speak to this better than I can, is their schedule is such that they're, even if we engage them and can get something in place, it's probably a couple of months out before they're able to, you know, work on our specific project. The last thing that I would say, then I want to turn it over to Lauren, and then I know Mr. Howard is here as well, is part of the conversation we had with the artist and Mr. Howard this morning was, last week, staff's contact with him was not intended to be enforcement per se with a violation citation, but just agreed to a pause on proceeding with the project till we could sort through the codes, till we could have the conversation we had this morning. I think that's still a possibility. The artist indicated this morning, their preference was, they washed the building in preparation for painting. They don't necessarily want to leave it half-finished, and if it's going to take into the spring before they have an answer, their preference is to paint it white and just prep it to start over again. So that's certainly probably the cleanest way from a code standpoint, but that wasn't something that we said that they necessarily had to do. With that, what I'd like to do is give Lauren an opportunity to walk you through the math and the code provisions specific to the Cozy sign as a little bit of background.
No, let Ms. Driscoll, let Ms. Driscoll bring the code. No, you don't need to leave, Mr. Howard. We just got procedure here. Go ahead, Lauren.
Jacob, if you wouldn't mind popping that analysis up. Staff learned about the sign late on Sunday night, contacted Mr. Howard Monday morning, and just asked if we could have, if he could pause in the creation of his sign so that we could get a chance to look at it without an application. We had no measurements, things like that, needed a chance to look at it, and could already see on social media, a lot of people had already seen it, loved it, wanted more of it. So we also looked and needed a little time to research to see if there are any exceptions to. Somebody asked us if really, you know, institutional-type buildings get an exception to sign codes? How do you give that kind of variance? Did some research. That's why we asked for the pause so that we could meet with him this morning.
Sorry to interrupt, but just to clarify, Sunday, not yesterday, Sunday a week prior.
Correct, Sunday before. But without a lot of details, staff needed just a little time to do some research, which is what we had asked him, and he said that was fine. As part of some of that research, also, quick, did an aside analysis. This is typically something we would do when we would get a new sign permit in the door. In this case, the question is, is it a sign? If you look at our definition of a sign, a sign is anything in writing, including letters, words, and numbers. There are letters involved in this application or in this particular sign. Pictorial representation, this includes illustrations or decorations. That is also part of this sign. And these are calculated to attract the attention of the public or any figures similar in character, which, one, could include being painted on, so they are painted onto the wall. Two, used to announce direct attention to or advertise something. It's welcoming you to come into the building. That's part of the sign and is not located inside the building. It is, of course, on the exterior side wall of the structure. So from that pure definition, this starts to tick all the boxes that make it a sign before we even get into a discussion of commercial speech, non-commercial speech. When we look at sign regulation, we go to the sign code, which is in the City Zoning Code, Chapter forty-two. And then we look at what zone the property falls into. So I've gotten quite a few calls over the last few days of people asking, well, what about that one? What about that sign? What about that sign? Well, they're in different zoning districts, so the rules are going to be different for those. This particular property is in C four, which is the central business district downtown. And beyond things that are typical to any zoning district identifying functional types of signs, structural permits, numbers of signs, most notable by most people when it comes to signage is maximum gross surface area. So how big can the sign be? We also do a collective surface area. So you can have a couple smaller signs that could equal that full surface area amount of signage. So for instance, in the downtown, you can have three square feet of signage for every foot of frontage. Well, the Cozy building is a very little building. It only has twenty-point-eight feet, so let's round it up to twenty-one, even to twenty-one linear feet of frontage. So if we take twenty-one times three, you get sixty-three square feet. So by the time we take their north-facing wall sign, which is twenty-four square feet, their Seventh Street projecting sign, which is twenty-four square feet, and then their Seventh Street awning sign, which is another four-point-eight-eight square feet, you get fifty-two-point-eight-eight square feet, leaving us just over ten square feet of remaining surface area of signage allowed for the building. In Cozy's situation, if you take the sign that's on the side of the building and you do the square footage analysis on that. do the square footage analysis on that, it's approximately 528 square feet, which is significantly greater than the allotted amount in the C4 district. So that's really the challenge here. And I would love to say from a staff perspective, if there was a one line that I could change and make this simple, I really would. But one of the things that makes the downtown unique is there's kind of a domino effect, right? We have a lot of different shaped buildings, we have very limited or no setbacks in many situations, so how the buildings work together, the scale of messaging of signage really does matter in that environment. Plus, the C4 is also very pedestrian-focused, where for instance, you know, driving down Ninth Street, that's not a pedestrian environment, but everything in the C4 is scaled for both car and people. So that also has to do with some of our sign regulations and kind of how they came to be. So we did have this conversation with Mr. Howard this morning. We kind of saw this coming. The excitement of all the art with Boom Festival has gotten people looking at blank walls differently, but that doesn't necessarily change the definition of a sign. And even if we changed our definition, we still have to be mindful of kind of what the Supreme Court decisions have done to reflect that sign code and how murals and signs can exist cohesively in a community. And it takes a bigger, broader conversation. So we had planned to start that this spring, knowing we had a lot of creative minds wanting to share, but also wanting to get everybody on the same page of what that outcome would look like. In reaching out to specialists, and I will say, if we could do this in-house right now, I would, but this is a very unique and specialized area of code. It also, in order to do it in a time-efficient manner, you kind of need to, this needs to be your thing. It's kind of like when you hire a specialist, subject matter expert to do something, they can do it quicker than other people. You know, that's their system, or that's the tool that they always work on. And we want this done in a timely manner. Clearly, it's kind of come to a precipice where folks are noticing this, and I do think bringing a subject matter expert in, a couple of them that I talked to said, you know, two, three months, they could have a good public process that let everybody have a chance to speak on this, to find code that would work in the community and get something to bring forward to you all. So I think that's pretty reasonable. I'm hoping they can start January, February at the latest, but I do think that this is a situation in which it would be reasonable to get somebody who could really kind of help us move this along in addition to everything else we got going on.
And if I could add one thing to that, in addition to being the subject matter expert, I think this is a really good example where it's going to take some creativity on our part, it's going to take some balancing of considerations, and someone that's been in these similar conversations in multiple communities and facilitated, you know, kind of public discussions about that, I think can add a lot of value versus us just kind of working in a vacuum trying to figure this out from scratch.
Well, and they're going to have to turn visual materials around quickly. I mean, in amongst everything that's coming in and out of the office every day, somebody stopping, and every time we talk about a scaling of something, or, you know, how a different change the rules would look, you're going to need to kind of create new visuals to go over with the group to say, okay, well, that's what it looks like here, that's what it looks like here, and that's what it looks like here in the C4. Is that what you were hoping this rule change would do? And so people are going to have to see those visuals, and somebody being able to produce those in a timely manner is also part of kind of what helps move this along, rather than staff in and amongst phone calls and other day-to-day things trying to produce those materials, plus research code, plus rewrite and do all of those other things.
So we, well, the little time we have had, we brainstormed a little bit about, okay, what's unique about that location? Could it be acceptable? And I think the conversation was not just absolute objection to it, but it then quickly becomes, how do we write something that that's acceptable, but it doesn't expand beyond what the community might have in mind for other building faces in the downtown? I think we can get there, but I do think an outside subject matter expert could certainly help us.
Well, I would agree you're taking the right approach to dive in, given the proliferation of mural art everywhere, and it seems Solana is really interested in that, we're kind of ahead of things in trying to develop that. But yeah, I'd be anxious to hear what the better brains are doing with that, because I can understand the city's point of view of, I mean, if this code is as old as 1966, it deserves to be reviewed in this modern concept, because I could see dividing a signage like this, I mean, look at any Apple ad in the world, you know, that it's very art, but it's still, a portion of it communicates the commercial message. I could see much of the mural part be considered art, and then to focus on the actual portion that's the message, is the commercial aspect. So fine line there between artistic minds and people that administer code.
And I think representation is one thing also that you'll see when you read case law about this is expressly related solely to the economic interest to the speaker and the audience, or speech that possesses commercial transaction when the, I'm going to use a coffee house, for instance, this is actually from Supreme Court case. If the coffee house has a dove with an olive branch and it says the word peace on the side of it, that's not a sign, because even though the word peace is there, you're not selling peace inside. I mean, coffee may do that for some people, but in general, the dove, the olive branch, the peace are not part of a commercial transaction that would take place in that building or draw you to that building for a commercial transaction. Where if we had a steaming cup of coffee and a coffee pot on the side, those are things that draw you into the use of that building, even without a word, that illustration can suggest that commercial transaction. There's actually a case law example of a mural, which is actually a sign of a bunch of puppies playing in a field. It's across from a dog park, and the mural happens to be on a building that is a doggy daycare. Never said a word, but it's dogs, they do doggy daycare, that was deemed commercial signage.
I think, go ahead. I'm sorry, I was just kind of following up on my, are there communities that have public boards or entities that decide what's an artistic aspect and what would be a commercial? I mean, that seems very hard to me to distinguish in given instances.
I do, I think that is one of the biggest challenges. I think part of what we have to focus on is really location, size, and scale of signage and work from there, rather than what is the content, or does it look like art? Does it feel like art? Because that's definitely where we get into the trouble zone. And that's definitely where, you know, cities that try to regulate to that messaging side of things typically end up getting sued.
You probably recall, time, place, and manner is the typical refrain of what you can regulate, and then Reed v. Gilbert is another US Supreme Court case that very clearly makes it known that you're not supposed to regulate based on content, so.
But the other option is, we may end up having to have a process for the murals. So it's like, if you can't say this is one thing, do you identify the others? I mean, that's part of the conversation I think needs to be had. Sometimes saying something isn't something, maybe you need a process to identify what something is. So I think there's some different things we have to look at.
Just from a definition standpoint, if this same painting was to say on the side of one of the grand elevators downtown away from where it is now, would it then not be considered a commercial sign?
And the reason I laugh is, now we're into off-premise signs. There are, there is signage that's not on a, at the actual business location that directs attention elsewhere.
Yeah, I kind of remember that discussion from, okay, yeah, I'll withdraw that question.
But it, you know, there's a lot of what-ifs. There certainly is a circumstance where a steaming cup of coffee on the side of a coffee house is a sign, and a steaming cup of coffee on the other side of town unrelated to anything going on might not be a sign. You know, as we, as we looked at murals, we had some conversation about this very question, and the first reaction was, well, if it includes lettering, or if it includes wording. But it really, if the wording's not commercial in any way, or doesn't have an attachment to a commercial operation, that in and of itself is a disqualifier.
Well, case in point being the Target logo. You know, some of the buildings, they don't even put the word Target on the side, they just have.
Well, Lauren made the example in prior conversations, the gas pump and the different icons that you see on directional signs on the side of the interstate, no words, but it's still conveying a message.
Well, I think if this had been anything other than a 101-year-old historic institution, it wouldn't be an issue. And, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. Howard wouldn't stay and join the conversation here, but I really believe he intended to get in on the whole mural trend. And it is, you pointed out well, the distinction between art and murals and a commercial sign. So I guess my thoughts all along as I've studied this issue is, what would it take for him to turn this into a mural rather than a sign?
So as I prepared my overview, I shared it with legal counsel to just make sure I wasn't saying anything incorrectly, and as might be expected, they responded two to three levels deeper in terms of legal analysis and court cases. And I say all that because that ends up being a legal question of, if there are no words, but it's still, you know, related to the business activity in the building, I think there's case law authority that says that's still a commercial message and it's still a sign. And then the added difficulty is, and there's examples in court cases of this as well, as soon as you start that treatment, whatever it might be, for one intended location or purpose, then the expectation is, I'm the same as them, I deserve the same treatment. And that's the precedentating nature that we have to really pay attention to as we revise the code.
You know, I think the other flip side of this is, you know, and I do, I did drive by, and it's really a nice drawing, but we don't spend our time regulating things that we like. Our codes make us be impartial when we have to deal with things that we don't like. And if everybody in town liked it, we'd probably push it through, and, but the next time, you know, this may be a poor example to use, but, you know, if a sexual explicit supply store wanted to come by and they had, you know, pictures of their paraphernalia on the side of the building, judging from comments during our last election, a lot of folks would be upset over that. Or if we had same-sex couples, you know, with a rainbow picture on the side of the building, saying, you know, Solana are friendly with LGBTQ community, folks, you know, we'd have folks coming up on the other side saying, well, how can you allow that? I mean, that's clearly a sign. So, you know, whatever we do, it's got to be something that will stand the test no matter who's coming up to the podium requesting. It makes it more difficult. I think it's a beautiful sign, but, you know, I've said it before, we have rules for a reason. There are times, you know, if a rule always has to be overridden, or we give exceptions, then there's probably something wrong with the rule. But we either need to look at finding a way to change the rule, but again, it's, you have to understand that someone else that you don't like may come by and use that same rule.
Building on that hypothetical just a little bit, without additional clarification, allowing one building to have 100% of the sidewall as a sign, you could do your frontage on Santa Fe 100% a sign. I don't think that's the intent, and that's, those are the kind of things that when we make a code amendment, we need to parse out so that we don't have unintended consequences.
And you know, if we wanted to have a signed frontage district, you know, where the front of every building had to be a sign, you know, so it looked like you weren't going into a store, but you were going into a sign, we could do that. I mean, what is, which city in Texas is weird?
Keep Austin weird?
Austin and Portland would probably take objection to stealing their fund, but, but again, that just has to be the nature of that particular district.
It's not lost on staff. This is a result of the enthusiasm and the energy that is the mural festival. And speaking with Mr. Howard, I'm confident that he viewed it as his mural and didn't make a distinction between it being a sign in our estimation and it being a mural. And I acknowledge to the artist that his artwork is high-energy, you know, it pops. We've just got to find a way to balance that with the sign code.
Well, I think we should be able to work through this without bringing in outside consultants. It shouldn't be that complicated.
I don't beg of you, but you might find us pleading to bring a consultant in on this one.
I do agree with Commissioner Davis's point, though, that, you know, we've got these ordinances and regulations and we need to be consistent. You know, someone could put something very derogatory or offensive to society as a whole, and that's why we have these ordinances.
And I guess even then, we can't prevent, all we can do is regulate the size of their sign.
Yeah.
It's a bit of a quandary, and I, coming back to the subject matter expert, I mean, you mentioned, I'm sorry, I did not mean to do that to you, but it sounds like it'll expedite the situation, which is what we want to see happen. And, I mean, I can't speak for the other members of the commission, but I'm getting a general sensibility of, we want to work with this business owner, we want to figure out if there is any middle ground, which sounds very questionable at this point. We'd like to get there, but, you know, for the general public, the sensibility of that we're just up here, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down, and, you know, this is art, this is not art, I mean, it's a lot more complicated than that. And unfortunately, we find ourselves in a situation where I think we all appreciate the art, but we are bound by laws, that we, you know, we're a governing body, and that we can't just arbitrarily decide, yes, this rule, we're not going to enforce, and, you know, this rule, we're going to apply, and there's a sense of fairness and uniformity to how we do things. And it's really not a good spot to be right now, to be honest. I don't like this, and it reminds me a lot of my law enforcement years, a lot of similarities. But unfortunately, that's part of our job, and it's going to take time, and hopefully we find some middle ground. But the concept of private property rights and, hey, this is something I own and I want to do what I will with it, that's not lost on me either as a business owner. I get it, it's just we are, we're in a bit of a quandary. I'll say it again.
If we had a different set of rules for downtown, or if we called it an arts district or whatever, we would not be able to have a separate board decide the artistic merits. But still, you still have to have a regulation, not necessarily word it like this, but it would still be, you either fit or you don't.
We do have a design review board that applies some architectural and aesthetic standards within, in that district, but that's about as far as I'm comfortable going without some legal advice beyond that. It certainly isn't, as Commissioner Linkiewicz pointed out, it's not thumbs up, thumbs down on the particular art.
It's just the structure and appearance of the building.
Some broader guidance, and is it within that guidance?
Boards and commissions make their decisions based on the criteria that's outlined in code. So when they make a decision, you have to be able to tie findings back to that. So the body finds, as per this section of code, it did not meet it. The body finds it did meet that section of code. So it's never really arbitrary, right? When the board reviews things. I mean, there is criteria in which they make the decision to. So when we say, like, can we have a board that decides if it's art or not art? That's a great example of, can you really find that criteria? That's where we stick to time, place, and manner. The board can decide, is that, you know, the right size for that space? Is that the right material for that space? When we get into downtowns, we start talking about, you know, historic materials, historic architecture, and that's kind of a unique line that we walk in our downtown. We're not a purist when it comes to historical integrity like some downtowns, which is, that's, we have a lot of cool stuff going on, which means we can bring some other things in, but you still have to be mindful of some of those components. So those are things that can be part of that decision. But as far as kind of content, or, you know, the flavor of the message, I mean, outside of outright profanity, Mr. Bankson?
Well, if I may, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, to all the points being made, most of what a municipality or city regulates is subject to a relative, relatively simple test of whether there is a nexus between the regulation and a legitimate public purpose. Most of the code is subject to that sort of test. When you get into First Amendment, regulation of anything When you get into First Amendment, regulation of anything that is protected by First Amendment, it gets more specific. The Supreme Court has told us now, when you are evaluating anything in the commercial speech category, it undergoes what is called a intermediary, intermediate scrutiny level. It's higher than that just rational nexus. There has to be a specific public purpose, it has to be narrowly tailored to meet that. That's the type of analysis that under, that, or critique, that anything that you do that regulates commercial speech would undergo if challenged. Now, we know also, however, that when you're looking at art as a form of expression that has been determined to be protected under the First Amendment, that undergoes what is called a strict scrutiny. It's a higher-level test. So that's the sort of distinctions that Ms. Driscoll is speaking of. And I think the only other point I would make, to your point, Vice Mayor, understand, I'm not sure if your thought was related to cost, or time, or whatever it might have been, but the only thing I would say, we are in an area where we, as your local general counsel, recognize, particularly with both the speed and accuracy with which we would like to address this, that at least from the legal standpoint, I think there are efficiencies, even in terms of costs, of having the specialized expert handling those sorts of questions, rather than you all having to wonder if we've figured that out or not. So, you know, I think there, there are efficiencies, and I know from Ms. Driscoll's work at state and national levels, she has reason to be familiar with folks who are expert in these areas. And from our standpoint as legal counsel, we welcome that sort of expertise on such a, such an important set of issues.
What's the commission's thoughts on that? Bringing the consultant in?
Oh, I'm completely on board with the consultant, yeah. I think that there are people that have been following this law for periods of time, and it's important that we have their wisdom and experience, and I'm sure it'll be much cheaper than us, you know, plowing a new road. And, I mean, I have a lot of confidence in our staff in figuring any kind of problem out and providing remedies, but it looks like we'll get much quicker answers if we buy some expertise.
I agree, and that doesn't mean that creative minds in town can't still work up some other solutions.
Oh, definitely. And I mean, one of the things that takes a little time versus, you know, me sitting in my office, just going one line at a time, is that we need public process. I mean, there are definitely a group of stakeholders here. There are artists, there are downtown business owners, there are downtown building owners, there's non-downtown businesses and buildings. So I mean, this is, this is something that we're seeing, not just downtown, but in the other areas. And I think to have time to have conversations with those folks, and ask, you know, how are these rules feeling and fitting, as we've changed as a community over the last few years, is an important part of that process. So definitely getting those creative minds to the table.
Well, I did learn a lot from the PowerPoint presentation that was forwarded to us, and things I hadn't thought of. So this is a learning experience for all of us, I think.
And it's to Greg's point, it's also like an ever-changing field. I mean, every time somebody gets sued, a different city, that's a different interpretation of that case law. So that's the other thing, is having somebody who's doing this day in and day out, following and applying those things. And there's, I will say, from 20-some years of experience, there's a difference between having read it and read somebody else's code, then trying to borrow pieces of that and put that into your own, versus somebody who has applied this in other places, and can kind of come in and say, well, here's several different examples, how do they apply to your place? Which can, can be very helpful. And sometimes just a new set of eyes to see things differently than we have before.
Well, I hope patience can prevail. This really did take off, and I want to remind people, this had nothing to do with the city collecting permit fees.
Nope. And I will say, we have not issued a violation notice, we simply called and asked for a brief pause, so we could research and ask for a meeting. That is the sum total of it. This morning, we met with the business owner, like we would any other business owner in town, wanted to talk through these things, and came in willing to talk about how the code could be different. Still haven't issued a violation notice, haven't, haven't done any of those things, had a normal conversation. In fact, as I was coming downstairs, Mr. Howard did drop off his permit, along with his application fee. We'll use that to kind of be in the system, work through it to see, you know, if he'd like to move forward with that, but at least that's on record. And as we go forward with the ordinance changes, if he'd like to wait and see how that applies, we can do that as well.
Well, I hope, I hope citizens realize that a lot has been put into this already, and we want to see it work out and be successful. I think, I think I can speak for a lot of citizens that we just like it to be worked out, so.
I think we're doing a great things here in town, and I look forward to the collaborative aspect of this. Certainly, our values set here in Salina is Midwesterners is different than Seattle or in Florida or DC, so I think it's important we have these conversations and do what's right for our place here.
Anything else?
That was longer than I expected, but good conversation, so we'll keep moving forward.
It was. Okay, that'll bring us to Citizens Forum. Anything that's not on the agenda, welcome to come and share, and keep your comments three minutes.
Laura Nannoslina, I discussed an issue with a commissioner last week after the meeting, over your city commission meeting. So, the four or the five, you ought to talk to Mr. Davis, what the issue was about. What was said November 6th, and what wasn't said here in this meeting. Remember the conversation you and I had with Dr. Davis? So, you're sticking your nose in private business, as Mr. Lenkowitz said. First and foremost, is private business. What Mr. Howard wants, that's his business. You have no business telling him how to run his place. That's the problem in this country, we've got too much government sticking their nose in where it shouldn't be. You're abusing your power. So, you better see if you can get Mr. Howard back in here and talk to him, see what his opinions are, what he wants, not what anybody else wants, what he wants.
So I could just clear in the confusion, that's not what he and I were speaking about. And the point he brought up last week was a very valid one, in that, and I think perhaps maybe because Veterans Day fell on an odd day of the week for our meeting, we did not have any official recognition of Veterans Day as part of our city commission meeting. And it certainly was not because we don't respect and love our veterans. I think that it was, the 11th just came out of sync for our meeting, and hope that if we do something belated, it will still be accepted as coming from our heart. Thanks for bringing that up.
Anyone else?
This is Ken Ritz of Salina. When you're speaking of public art, we had a marvelous mural on Campbell Plaza that, had I known that they were just going to trash it, when that was reworked, I certainly would have said, wait a minute, isn't there some way? Because I watched that being created, and what a marvelous, what a marvelous result, much as what's on the grain silos. That's, that's magical, what, what that artist did. We have just recently gotten a long wall on Fifth Street, just across from Campbell Plaza. Good grief, I could do that, which means it's not art. If I can, that's the, my definition, when I look at something, I say, if I can do it, it's not art. If I, there's no way I could do it, it's probably good art. And so, I'm envious, but not upset. It's true of lots of areas, that you need someone that has a skill that you just don't, and it's very helpful to you. But, no, I, I, I don't know what, what's going on with Cozy Inn specifically, but if, if you're at all familiar with art going back hundreds of years, how many of the artists whose work now sells for more than you could, more than it would take to buy all of downtown? And they starve to death. In their day, it just didn't catch at all. They were ahead of their times. And I doubt that will apply to this wall, but it might. I mean, there, there may be a different perspective, different generation that is, and that that will be what happens. But, no, it's, 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 there's, there's, there's no need to even think about pleasing everybody, because we're different. And if we can't handle, I'm not upset, I just don't look at that wall.
Ten seconds, Mr. Ritz.
Anyway.
Thank you. Anyone else? Entertaining, oh, I'm sorry.
Johnny Keller from Salina, retired schoolteacher, retired military disabled veteran, and you had a good speech the other day, you should have had a loudspeaker.
Thank you.
Yeah, I liked what you said, thank you. I look at the huge mural on an elevator that probably should have been taken down, not the mural, but the elevator itself, because it's an abandoned building, and it was kind of an eyesore. But wasn't that put up to draw people to Salina? I mean, that's how I see it, it does. People come there, it's a great painting, all the way around that thing. And I understand what you all are going to do, and I loved what I heard from her and everything about the legal side of all this, but I also have heard people say, I don't like that on that elevator, it should have been torn down, it was an eyesore. So when we talk about, and I'm not a lawyer, my degree's in business management and ethics, but when I hear this, say, well, the Supreme Court said this can't be tied to bringing attention to a person that's making, to make money, yet we have these murals in town that bring people to our city to spend money. It's kind of a weird thing to think about when you look at that, you know? It's being abstracted, right? So when we say this doesn't work this way, but it's because we're worried about being sued, I look at a 100 and almost two-year-old building that I like to go to, and he has 45,000 people a year that come off the highway to buy burgers there. Why can't, why can't we look at it case by case? Thank you.
Anyone else? Entertaining motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.